Well, good evening, our Richland II family. We're so excited to see so many people here tonight representing not only our educators, but also our community. We appreciate those who are out tonight. It looks like we have several who are signed up for public participation later. We're thankful that we have people who are engaged and desire to be part of the Richland II family and come and speak. We are now going to go ahead and reconvene the April 24th, 2018 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Richland II School Board of Trustees where we've just returned from a busy executive session, and so forgive us for being a few minutes behind, where we discussed student expulsions, student appeals, employment recommendations, releases and in district transfers, and a student matter regarding appeal. At this time, we'll now jump right into our busy agenda with item 3.1, our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the passing of our former First Lady Barbara Bush, I wanted to share some of her pearls of Woodstum for our inspirational moment for the evening. The home is the child's first school, the parent is the child's first teacher, and reading is the child's first subject. Some people give time, some money, some their skills and connections, some literally give their life's blood, but everyone has something to give. Cherish your human connections, your relationships with friends and family. And finally, whether you are talking about education, career, or service, you're talking about life, and life must really have joy. It's supposed to be fun. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Pleasure) Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Thank you for those quotes from our former First Lady. She will be missed. At this point, we'll move on to item 4.1, the approval of our current agenda. May I get a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I'd like to move that we approve our agenda.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini to approve our current agenda. May I get a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Elkins Johnson. If no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Okay, motion passes six-zero, which reminds me that Mr. Manning is not with us tonight. He has an out-of-town business trip that he had to take and sends his well wishes. So, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item 5.1, which is our student-focused. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair members of the board, April's student focus is Lake Carolina Elementary Lower Campus. Principal Dr. Andrea Berry, and students will be sharing highlights from this year's around the themes of leadership, relationships, and rigor. Dr. Berry.
Good evening, Chairman Plank, School Board, Dr. Davis. We are absolutely thrilled to be here, and you can tell I've brought my best here tonight. So, Lake Carolina Elementary Lower Campus, we're in our fourth year. We are the only primary campus in Richland II, so that means that we have three-year-olds to eight-year-olds, about 500 of them. So, we wanted to talk to you tonight just a little bit about our school and share some things about Lake Carolina Lower. So, the first thing I wanted to share with you, we're super proud of this. We just found out before spring break that we were named, were given the ASCD Whole Child Award under the Tenet of Engagement. And I think as my students talk a little bit about leadership, relationships, and rigor, you'll see why we earned that award. All right, so Candace will talk first.
Good evening. My name is Candace King, and I am a first grader. I'm happy to be here tonight to share a little about leadership opportunities we have at L.C. Lower. At most elementary schools, all the big kids leave the school. Most schools use fourth and fifth graders. Well, we don't have fourth and fifth graders at our school, so we take charge and run the morning news show in all the clubs. Our nature club actually holds on lessons for entire school on Earth Day. We just did that last week. As a leader in my classroom, I always enjoy making guests feel welcome. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katherine Banks, and I'm in the second grade. I wanted to talk to you about important relationships at L.C.E. Low. We are a family at my school, and that means taking care of everyone. One way we do this is through Unified Buddies. Second graders are paired with our special needs students to build relationships, train, and promote inclusion at our school. I'm a Unified Buddy, and that mean, and I love to spend time weekly with Shaleah. Last week, I went with her to cheer on at the Special Olympics. She did an awesome job. Thank you.
My name is Tiana Tugan, and I'm also a seventh grade leader. One area of my school that I love is the tech lab. The rigorous highs, we learn about coding and engineering. Recently, we've been learning about how to use algorithms and sequencing encoding. We did this through small robots that we programmed. We worked with B-bots, Code and Go Mouse, Snap Circuits, Cubetto, and Code.org. We were able to get these robots that were military-grade through R2 Innovates. Everyone loves to come to their tech lab each week.
So, as you see, we just wanted to highlight a few things. I think sometimes people look at a primary school and they underestimate what these young children can do, and you can see they are leadership, they help promote inclusion and the relationships we have, and then the rigorous high as well. So, do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Dr. Berry. And before I open the questions, if I could, it's Candace, is it Katherine?
Katherine.
And Tanner. Tanner. I couldn't, that's great, thank you. Well, it's impressive for you guys to be able to remember all those lines. It's, I have to sit there and cheat all the way through this thing. So, we're impressed. At this time, I'll open up to the board, any questions or comments? Ms. Smackey.
Just good job, good job, and I appreciate your stick-to-it-ness. That means that sometimes if you get nervous or you stumble, you don't stop, you stick to it, and I appreciate your being brave and sticking to it. You did a great job. As Mr. Plank said, it is hard to memorize things, and you have all of your school lessons and all too. You did a great job. You are the most important people in the district, the students, and so we're always happy to see you all represented. Bless you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Smackey. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Just wanted to say, great job, and you look so adorable. Thank you for being so smart. Thank you.
We're a uniform school, and I asked the students, you know, and said, "Do you want to dress in our Sunday best, or do you want to wear..." They said, "We want to wear our uniforms," so.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Mr. Shad.
Of course, I'm biased. Dr. Berry, y'all do a wonderful job over there. We do a wonderful job.
Yes, yes, we do.
In terms of School Improvement Council, so as you know, my four girls went through Lake Carolina under your tutelage, and I appreciate everything that all the staff, the faculty, and of course, the most precious commodities, which are our children. Y'all did a fantastic job, young folks, and Tanner, I love your shoes. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Any other questions? Well, I'll finish by saying this, Dr. Berry, thank you so much. You've certainly done a great job. We appreciate you guys, and you know what's really neat, because this is your first time at a board meeting. In fact, it's probably a first time for a lot of people at this board meeting. This is where you find out what we're doing in our district. This is where you hear about the things like leadership, discipline, the various things that are so powerful in this district. So, we appreciate you guys being a part. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to our next item, which is 6.1, Special Recognitions. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have coming before to lead us through our special recognitions, and I think we have quite a few tonight. We have Ms. Libby Ruth.
Ms. Ruth.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, Chairman Plank, and members of the board, once again, thank you for this opportunity to recognize award-winning students who've won top honors at the state and the nation. We especially thank our staff, members, our students, and parents who have come out tonight to get the special recognition. You see, this is an extremely busy time of year. I don't think you could go to any school in our district tonight, or yesterday, tomorrow, the rest between now and the end of school, and there's not going to be something at a school every night between now and the end of school. So, many of our students are getting ready for AP exams, which I think start next week, at an orchestra concert, playing soccer, finishing up their soccer season. So, we don't have them all with us, but we're going to recognize and honor them, and the ones that are here, we're going to bring up. So, let's get started with some talented actors and actresses from Blythewood High School. If those students would come forward under the direction of Sandra Deedle, along with Bobby Cunningham, who are the interim principal. So, y'all, come on up. Once y'all get up here, I'll start telling everybody what y'all've done, and then I'll call out names, and y'all can raise your hands, so we know who you are. So, Blythewood's original production of Growing Up Wonderland won first place out of a field of 32 at the South Carolina Theater Association's High School One Act Play Festival. That qualified them to go on to represent the state at the Southeastern Theater Conference, which is the largest regional theater conference in the country. This is the third time in four years that Blythewood's theater program has qualified for the Southeastern Conference. And allow us to go back to the state and start meeting all these talented students. At the state festival for that one act play, two students, Imani and Nyara Hargrave, where are they? They received recognition for excellence in acting by being named to the state All-Star Cast. The play that all these students were in or supported won for Best Technical Design for its combined scenic, costume, lighting, and sound design. Now, when they went on to the Southeastern Conference, two students were named to the All-Star Cast. They are Tierra Gardner, is Tierra with us tonight? Very good, and Abby Stroud, Abby, not able to make it. Another student, Liza Hunter, Liza in the middle there, was named Best Supporting Actress for the entire Southeast Region. Now, let's meet the other members of the cast and the crew who made this all possible. If you're here, let us know. Jacqueta Brown. Jacqueta, thank you. Kyra Childs, Kira, of course, I knew it, the minute it came out my mouth, I said, "Yep." Okay, so we're going to see if we can go three for three here. Trev, Trevar? Trevor. At least we can laugh about it, right? Trevor Decker, okay, let's hope I get this one right. Jesse Elliott, is that right, Jesse? Okay, good. Michaela Martin, Lauren McDowell, Sophie Pirich?
Yes.
Avery Williams, Jerry Winhorn, is that close enough? Eric Grooms, and Sydney Stroud. Sydney, make it. I know you all put in councilance hours, Ms. Deedle, under your direction, countless, countless hours. You had to raise money to go to the Southeast, do your fundraising, to go to the Southeastern competition. We are so proud of you, bingo proud of you. Congratulations. What we'll do, what we'll do? Oh, I am so sorry, Ellie? Did I, and, and? Emery Turner, Ellie, Warrior Steen, I thought I might get that one all mixed up. Thank you, Ms. Deedle. What we're going to do, show our large group, if y'all will, after the special recognitions, make your way out to the lobby. We have a beautiful set of stairs, and we will take a group photograph with all of you, and we won't leave anybody out. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, we usually stick with student awards, but our next honoree has to be up here for a lot, and she has two awards herself. So, we're going to start with her, and then we're going to grow the group that's up here with her. And that is Dr. Sabrina Suber, principal from Richland Northeast High. Dr. Suber, will you please come forward? Dr. Suber won two prestigious awards from two groups that have deep roots at Richland Northeast. The first is from the South Carolina Association of Student Councils, which named Dr. Suber Administrator of the Year. In letters nominating her for this honor, the student body president wrote, "Dr. Suber is always so proud of the presence that our student government has in the community. She is our biggest fan and always allows, always shows up to support us. Dr. Suber is truly one of a kind and always makes sure that students and teachers feel welcome." And from a parent, said, "What I notice most about Dr. Suber is her care and concern for our students. They are first and foremost in every decision she makes and every action that she takes. Under Dr. Suber's leadership, our school pride is at a level that has not been seen for a decade." The second award is for her support of student journalists. Dr. Suber was named the Dr. K. Phillips Administrator of the Year by the Southern Interscholastic Press Association. In a nomination from the Broadcast and Yearbook Advisor, it said, "Dr. Suber fosters real journalism. She understands that our students are journalists, not publicists. She respects their voices and encourages them to write about issues important to students, even sensitive topics. She makes journalism a priority in her budget allocations and was paramount in encouraging the district to upgrade our space last year." But even more important than those tributes are the results, and we have some of those results here tonight. So, would the Cavplex Convergence Media Students who won awards in the Southern Interscholastic Press Association competitions, please come forward. Come on up, don't be shy. I know you're here. And we also have advisors Nina Brooke and A.J. Chambers. Now, these are just some of the 18 students who won numerous first-place awards. In fact, I want y'all to know, I went on and printed off the site and looked at all the awards. Almost every, I think almost every single award had a Richland Northeast student in the category. It was amazing. They have first-place winners in broadcasting, literary magazine, music videos, sports coverage, yearbook spreads, and much more. And so now, I'm going to try to see if I can do this without messing it up too bad. I think I know who's here, so we'll start with Yasmin Lee. Is Yasmin here? Yasmin? Yasmin was elected president of the student group of the Southeastern Interscholastic Press Association. You also won Best in Show for the onsite competition for reporter, and you were with RNE-TV, correct?
Um, not onsite, but just recorded.
Just recorded, but they, gotcha. All right, it's Alex Wages, I believe is here. All right, Alex, you won Best Anchor for broadcast as well? No? Okay, no, wait a minute, no, that's right, my right. You won Best Script for broadcast, yes. Sports coverage, yes, Best in Show for sports coverage. And you and Kayla Jeffers were part of a team, the Best in Show Broadcast Team, and Kayla, you also won for PSA Best in Show, also academic script, I believe, broadcast writing for RNE-TV. Okay, all right, so I have Yasmin, Alex, Kayla. Do I have a Derek Pauling here? You won for your music video, correct, with Richland Northeast TV? Did I miss anything first place? All right, Caleb Daniels. Caleb won for the short film Best in Show, is that right? Okay. Clarkson Broadwater. Clarkson won for Best in Show Videography, as well as sports script writing for RNE-TV. Okay, who have I not got? Yes, sir.
Robert.
Robert, I know what you won for, though. Hold on a minute. I got, oh, yep, I had it just listed on my second page. Robert won for Academic Spread, Best in Show for the Archive, and correct me if I'm right, the Archive is the Yearbook. Okay, because we have RNE-TV represented up here, the Archive is the Yearbook, we have the Cavalier, which is the student newspaper, and then we have Psych, which is the literary magazine, correct? All right, did I leave anybody else? I got everybody.
You should say Debbie On Perkins.
Oh, yes, Debbie On Perkins, Ms. Perkins, where are you? Ms. Perkins, her students did not attend, but she came, and we also have Mary Paige Boyce, who's, I think we have a lot of members who are playing orchestra. Debbie won for photography, Best in Show for the Archive, and Gracie won for the Archive, the Psych, Psych for her artwork and layout for that. All right, so I think, can we get this photo? Okay, so let's give them a big round of applause while this gets ready. Dr. Suber, you just stay put, because we have another very talented award-winning group, PCA Theater Students, who took top awards at the Palmetto Dramatics Association Festival and the South Carolina Thesbian Conference held at Wentworth University. If you all will please come forward. We have the director with us as well, Donna Wilson, if you will come join your students up front. Again, another very, group of very active students. So, in playwriting, I'm not sure if we have all these people here, but Yasmin Rivera? Yasmin, not here. She won first place for the play From Down Under, which centers on the perilous plight of undocumented immigrants. Acting in the play were Asia Cave and Kerslyn Gunner. Students also won for Best Technical Elements for another winning play called Doubt: A Parable, and y'all want to tell me your names, and I'll...
Darius Abson.
Darius, and Kerslyn Gunner. And y'all were part of the group that won the big award for lighting and sound, along with the stage crew, several others, for the technical elements of that play, correct? Great, well, congratulations on your wonderful... Dr. Suber, you can stay up for one more. But I'm going to get Jeff Timoney, principal at Spring Valley High School, and director of R2I2, Kevin Albersy, to please come forward, along with students Claire Levy from Richland Northeast and R2I2, and Alyssa Williams from Spring Valley. These two ladies were recognized by the Aspirations in Computing Awards. They are among 13 young women from across the state who were honored by ITology at Wentworth University. The award is part of a national effort to encourage more young women to choose careers in technology, and is organized in South Carolina by the National Center for Women and Information Technology. They were selected for their demonstrated interest and achievements in computing, proven leadership ability, academic performance, and plans for post-secondary education. Now, let's learn a little bit about what makes them so special to win this award. Since middle school, Claire, Claire, has been trying to learn all she can about how computers work. She didn't want to risk dissecting her own computer, so she would watch tutorials and read books, and then out came Minecraft, which I think changed a lot of people's worlds. And she would practice day and night figuring how that worked. In her freshman year, she was one of the founders of a club called Good Girls Gone Geek, which taught girls interested in computers how to get jobs in the field. The future software engineer and game developer would like to make technology more sociable. Since people will continue to look at their screens anyway, she'd like to figure out a way to bring back a sense of community into technology. That is very inspiring. For Alyssa, growing up, the daughter of an engineer and loving all STEM subjects, she knows her future career will include computing and technology. She'd like to explore a career in mechanical engineering. She began studying programming after an hour of code session at her middle school. In high school, she is a leader in the Technology Student Association and VEX Robotics Team. She says she refuses to be left behind as the world continues to advance. Congratulations to you both. And that concludes our awards and honors, so we'll give these students and parents just a brief moment to exit if they would like, and remember for the Blythewood High Group, the Blythewood High Group, we need you outside on the stairs for a group photograph. Thank y'all for coming, and thank you, board, for this time.
We're now up to 7.1, the approval of our consent agenda. May I get a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda for the regular board meeting April 24th, 2018.
Thank you. Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda for the April 24th, 2018 meeting. May I get a second? Second by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Any discussion? Motion passes six-zero, thank you very much. Next up on our agenda is the public participation, our first of two public participations. We do have six people signed up tonight. We have a limit per session of 15 minutes, three minutes per person. I'm going to read, since we have six, I've put them in alphabetical order, and I'll just go ahead and read the guidelines to all who are participating. The meeting is recorded, our meeting as we speak is recorded, it's available for viewing on YouTube. You will have three minutes to present, and just for your knowledge, we, as a board, will not be responding to public participation at this time. We ask that you refrain from references to school personnel or students, and when you do come up to the podium, if you would, start by stating your name and your address for the record. So, I'll start in alphabetical order, and we'll begin with Ms. Crystal, is it Argamito? Great, Crystal, please.
Good evening. My name is Krista Argamito. My address is 1601 Malcolm Drive, 29204. I'm the president of the Richland Northeast Latino SIC, so I'm here to speak on their behalf, as well as Mr. Ron Huff. One of my concerns tonight was that we need, that we're in desperate need of a Spanish-speaking secretary, the same as Dent has. We have a lot of families that come in who are not bilingual, so they're, they speak their primary language of Spanish, and it's hard for them to communicate their needs for their children or their wants for their children. And a lot of times, they have to wait or come back for another, for somebody to come interpret for them. So, that was our main needs, that was my reason for being here. We have the biggest population of Latino-Spanish-speaking families, which is 11% in Richland II, and since we're an international baccalaureate school, I figured we should be able to support our families that we're catering to for our community. It's vital for them to be able to speak for their children, and it's vital for us to have that, that, for us, you know, to be able to communicate properly.
I'm Ron Huff.
I'm Ron Huff, the Hispanic family liaison for Richland 2. I'm very happy that I can facilitate this group. From what we've seen, Richland Northeast High School is the only school in the state with a Spanish-speaking SIC group, and that is due to the leadership of the administration and the principal of Richland Northeast High School. I don't know if she's still here. She's facilitated this, and she thought it would be a great idea to give these parents a voice, and I'm there to facilitate, and they have been running strong for two years now, and they usually have seven or eight parents show up. And so, I'm happy to facilitate, and it was the idea of the moms for Crystal and I to come out, and we're also proud alumni of the school. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Thank you, Ms. Argamito. I appreciate you being here this evening. Next up, we have Ms. Michelle Brodmann. And again, if you would just state your name and your address. Thank you so much.
Chairman Plank, members of the Board of Trustees. My daughter is a graduate of Richland 2 schools. It's my first board meeting in four years. She will be graduating from college next month. Great education at Richland 2, first IB candidate group to run through RNA, and it was a great experience. However, I attended a meeting last night for the very first time. I was invited to attend the More Justice meeting, and I was very dismayed that there were no members of the Richland County Board of Trustees or the superintendent present at this meeting. I'm sorry. And my understanding was that proper notice was given. I understand there was a change in how the agenda was presented, but every parent in that audience that was a Richland 2 family, we felt abandoned by you, all of you. The only thing More Justice is trying to do is to help even the playing field in the educational system and bring in ideas that will help terminate some of these... We don't need to be expelling 4K students from school for normal four-year-old behavior. We need to be maybe refocusing them, or redirecting them, or finding what works on their level. But when you expel a four-year-old from school, you turn off that switch that makes them want to go there. That is all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Brodmann. Appreciate your comments and your comments about having your student through our district. Appreciate that. At this time, we'll move on to our next individual, which would be, is it Robin Campbell? And Ms. Campbell, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Robin Campbell. My address is 2915 Chatsworth Road, that's Columbia 29223. I am here proudly representing More Justice Ministry as well, as well as Rehoboth Baptist Church, and just have some comments. We all invited you to our Nehemiah Action on yesterday, so that you could be a part of the solution. All of you were absent. None of you chose to, if you were there, to address the 1,300 community members that were present, and we feel that it sends a poor message to us, your constituents. But the door remains open. This is not about any of us, it's about our kids. It's not blaming or attacking, again, it's about our kids. It is the doing, it is doing the very same thing that we know all of you care about as well, which is making Richland 2 School District one of the best districts in our country. We all continue to endorse and wholeheartedly support Mercy Ministries such as Tutoring Kids, Backpack Buddies, Mentoring Kids, or supporting teachers in different forms. We also don't believe we have shows between, have to choose between doing these things and holding our education systems accountable for fair policies and practices for our children. It's been asked, why are you focused on us, you guys? There are other districts with bigger problems, and the answer is simple. We live here. This is our district, our kids go to this school, and we just want it to be superior. This is where we pay taxes and vote, and we aren't going anywhere. So we just, we want you guys to cooperate with us. Dr. Davis, we will be reaching out to you in the coming days to schedule a meeting with you. We pray that you are responsive and schedule the time to meet with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that, Ms. Campbell. At this time, we'll move on to our next individual, and forgive me, this is gonna be Lydia Carnasal? Carnasal? Thank you. And if you would state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Lydia Carnasale. I'm representing myself, but I also attended the More Justice last night. I am also a prior Richland 2 employee. I'm a parent of three children in Richland 2. I'm also a professional that's trying to work with Richland 2. I value early education, early childhood very much. It is very near and dear to my heart. I value all the jobs that we all do within Richland 2, and feel that the resources and the excellence is here. I was very disappointed that no one could represent our district last night. My daughter, who's 14, was also very disappointed that our district was spoken about, that these problems are within our district that she faces daily in her school, and all she wanted was to know that someone was listening. As an entering high schooler, all she wanted was to know that the people that are there to educate her were there in her corner, just to listen. So as a parent, I am concerned at the lack of communication between entities, not because you guys are not willing, not because we as a district are not full of resources, but because there was no response. The community needs to be as aware as I am as the wealth of knowledge and information that are within this room. The community needs to be aware of the care that there is within this room. So, as an early childhood educator, as a parent, and as a professional, I would hope that communication and dialogue, whatever it may be, can be open, so that all parties understand what is available, because there's a wealth of things being done within the district that many are not aware of, that we, you know, that others need to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carnasale. I appreciate your words. Next up, we have Helen Durpinghaus. Forgive me. Durpinghaus? Oh, yes. And again, state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Helen Durpinghaus, 246 South Lake Road. I'm a parent of a Richland 2 grad, and I'm also part of More Justice and a member of Living Springs Church. Will the members of More Justice who are here tonight please rise while I make a few comments? More than 1,300 of us gathered last night because we want our students in the classroom and learning. We gathered because we need clear information on school discipline, and we know that the community deserves that. To that end, we asked the school officials that were present two questions. First, will you meet with More Justice within 45 days to develop a discipline scorecard for each school in the district, and push to make those public by August of 2018? And secondly, will you champion the hire of a PBS coach for the district to conduct a robust implementation of PBIS in the five schools with the highest suspension rates by August 2018? These are proven best practices to address school discipline issues and poor school climate. We ask, and we will continue to ask, for these steps to be taken, because we want our schools to be excellent. We believe that is what all of you want too. Currently, according to the data that we have managed to get, students are being suspended at dangerously high rates. For example, in Richland 2 during the 2016-17 academic year, multiple elementary schools had less than 10 out-of-school suspensions total. This past year, however, Condor Elementary suspended 116 students out of school. That's a 132% increase from two years prior. We understand that the BEST best model is being used in 15 of our schools in the district. While in some of these schools, there have been significant decreases in office referrals and in school suspensions, in 10 of the 15 best model schools, out-of-school suspensions have in fact increased in 10 of 15. At Spring Valley High, for example, out-of-school suspensions have increased from 392 to 528. This program, for all of its potential merits, is not having the outcome of keeping students in school. Let's figure it out together. The problem is entrenched, but we know that working together towards a better future is the way to go. We can more effectively support our teachers and administrators and keep our students in class. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Durpinghaus. I appreciate you coming right under the three minutes. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the others here as well. Next up, the final one that had pre-registered is Rabbi Mallow. If you would please approach. And if you would state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Eric Mallow, 3 Sweet Jasmine Court, Columbia 29229. I know a lot of you personally, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you. As you know, I'm the senior rabbi of Tree of Life Congregation. I'm also on the executive board of More Justice. And last night, we had our inaugural Nehemiah Action Assembly, during which more than 1,300 local residents, parents, and taxpayers came together to do justice. It was a powerful sight, truly an image of Dr. King's beloved community, in which he saw causes like ours reaching towards a brighter future for humanity. In 1956, he wrote, "It is in this type of spirit and this type of love that can transform opponents into friends. It is this type of understanding, goodwill, that will transform the deep gloom of the old age into the exuberant gladness of the new age. It is this love which will bring about miracles in the hearts of men." Last night, black, white, Hispanic, old, young, rich, poor, Christian, Jewish, Muslim came together to speak truth to power on the issues most pressing to us in our community, mental health and education. Both Sheriff Leon Lott and Columbia Police Chief Skip Holbrook were there and made clear, measurable commitments to the community to ensure that all officers become certified in crisis intervention training, including all of our SROs. They will now be better equipped to identify mental illness and deescalate conflict. Mayor Benjamin and several city and county council members also made clear yes commitments to the community, to take first steps to establish an accredited clubhouse in our area to serve adults with severe and persistent mental illness. The willingness of those officials to be present, not to make speeches, but to listen and respond clearly to the specific concerns that we had was certainly a thing to celebrate. When it came to taking action to address serious problems in our education system, the silence of every single Richland 2 board member, and you, Dr. Davis, was deafening. The prophet Amos once taught, "Let justice well up like water, righteousness like an unfailing stream." We, the resident activists of Richland 2, we are the unfailing stream, and until our cups are overflowing with justice that we seek, we will not be deterred. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi Mallow. Appreciate that. And at this point, we are right at our 15-minute mark for the total first public participation, so we'll need to move on and appreciate the comments from those who participated. At this time, we're now gonna move on to item 9.1 Legislative Update. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, there were a lot of, quite a few bills that were passed out of subcommittee, but nothing went to the floor. I'll touch on a few of those. The disturbing schools bill was passed out of Senate Subcommittee favorably to go to the open floor, and it's actually proposing practices that Richland 2 has implemented over two years ago already. There's a current proviso for tax credits for exceptional need students that pass out of Subcommittee, it'll go to the floor. Another Subcommittee bill that passed out is to include opioid information in the public school health curriculums. It has to go to the House, the Senate in-house floor. There's a study about feasibility of metal detectors in public schools. There was a lot of attention given at House Subcommittee level to allow marching band to be used as a PE credit, and there was some interesting discussion to that end. And there was a bill that passed favorably to allow teachers to be paid beyond 90 days sick leave. These are all Subcommittee reportings that have to be voted on the floor. And beyond that, regulatory issues surrounding the SCANA, VC Summer issues took center stage from about Wednesday on with regard to rate hikes, and all of you watch the 6 o'clock news, you're well aware, and that's pretty much usurped the remainder of the legislative week. So, I'm happy to share. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Mackey regarding Legislative Update? Ms. Mackey, thank you for that report. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we'll move on to item 10, Voting on Executive Session Items. Item 10.1, Employment Recommendations. We did not have any per-policy decisions under employment recommendations, so we'll move on to 10.2, Student Expulsions. At this time, I will entertain a motion for student expulsions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shad.
With regard to student expulsions, we have one student, and I move that we accept the decision to expel the student.
Motion is made by Mr. Shad to uphold the district's recommendation. May I get a second? Second by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any further discussion? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Next up is item 10.3, Student Appeals. May I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Shad.
With regard to student number one, I move that we return this student to their home school with strict probation. And as to student number two, deny the appeal. And with regard to the student appeals on the addendum?
Yes, sir.
Student number one, deny the appeal. Student number two, deny the appeal. Student number three, Blythewood Academy with the Radac Services. Student number four, deny the appeal. And student number five, Blythewood Academy with the Radac Services.
The motion has been made as stated by Mr. Shad. May I get a second? Second by Dr. Elkins Johnson. And before we vote, because of the length of that motion, we'll take a look at it on Second was Dr. Elkins Johnson. So we have the motion to return student to their home school with strict probation, deny the appeal, and uphold the administration's recommendation, and expel students two, and then under the addendum one, two, and four, and then recommend student three and five in the addendum to Blythewood Academy with the Radac Services. It's been made by Mr. Shad and seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much. Next up is item ten-point-four Student Matter Regarding An Appeal. May I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Shad.
I move that we uphold the superintendent's decision regarding the student appeal.
Motion's been made to uphold the superintendent's decision regarding the student appeal. May I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Motion passes six-zero. Again, thank you very much. Next up is item eleven, Old Business Action Requested. We have one item under there, eleven-point-one Approval Of Policy Revisions. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We bring before you tonight for your approval of the following policies, policy revisions to D N school properties disposition, D C taxing borrowing, D C A post-assurance taxes and bond compliance, and D G A authorized signatures. If there are any questions, Dr. Franklin will be happy to assist you.
So our second reading of a review of these policies. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the proposed recommendations to policy revisions as listed.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. May I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shad. Any further discussion regarding policy revisions D N, D C, D C A, and D G A? Motion passes six-zero. Thank you. Next up is twelve-point, or twelve, New Business No Action Request. We'll start with twelve-point-one, which are policy proposals. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The following policies are being brought before you, there are policies, proposals, for recommendations. We have I H B A, Special Education Programs For Students With Disabilities, and J F A B F, Students In Foster Care. Dr. Franklin is standing before you to assist if there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These two policies are the last two policies of our 2017, 2018 Legislative Update. The policies are drafted for us by the School Boards Association and include some recommended changes from district administration and with me or to join me in answering any questions that you have. For I H B A is Dr. Shirley Vickery from Special Services, and for policy J F A B F, Students In Foster Care, our lead social worker, Mrs. Abby Cobb. Now, we'll note in policy I H B A, the second bullet, the words "to" and "and" should be stricken through, so that the sentence reads, "The student may elect to delegate his or her educational rights using the district's delegation form or power of attorney."
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Are there any questions?
Could you read that again? That was what we had a question on.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Franklin.
"The student may elect to delegate his or her educational rights using the district's delegation forms." Let me strike through the words "to" and "and."
Okay. Any questions or comments on I H B A? J F A B F, Students In Foster Care. Any questions or comments?
Ms. Shad.
Sorry. Ms. Shad.
Back to I H B A. Whose recommendation was it to, and I'm at the third paragraph, to remove high quality and change it to appropriate?
That is our School Boards Association recommendation. Anything that was administratively changed in-house is highlighted in yellow.
Did the School Boards Association give any background, any reasoning, any rationale behind moving from high quality, which was previously in there, to now just, my word, just appropriate?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Shad, are you having a suggestion on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think that we need to just keep it at high quality so we can have a standard to go for. I think that it means something to have it in our policy. We've had it in the past, and I'm not, if they didn't provide any rationale as to why they want to move from high quality to appropriate, then I think we just need to continue it as our district, that that's what we want to achieve as a premier school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shad. Ms. Mackey.
I think we had a discussion previously with regard to high quality being appropriate in that sense. You know, high quality for different levels of learners is still a high quality for wherever you are. And I think our concern before was making sure that we don't minimize our expectations for students where they are. It doesn't mean that you're asking all students to perform at an AP level or an honors level, but you're asking the very best and highest quality of education for a student where they are. And I appreciate that, and I concur, Mr. Shad.
Any other questions? Ms. Agostini.
We're having to share a computer here right now. Thank you. I just, I appreciate what everyone said, but I am going to disagree when we were talking just basically students with disabilities. I don't think that we're talking about, we're talking about the appropriate educational program for each student, and that's how I'm interpreting what they've said. Not that the quality is going to be reduced, but that it's appropriate for each individual.
Any other questions or comments on this particular policy from the board?
Yeah. Can we wordsmith it some to still include high-quality educational program that is appropriate or something?
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion. We just keep both words. You guys work on that?
I like the high quality so that we're not implying that we're diminishing anyone's capabilities, but maybe we can wordsmith it to incorporate appropriate, but still leave high quality in.
Yeah. I believe that would be the will of the board to have you work in both.
Okay.
To, because we're talking about, to Ms. Agostini's point, quality versus appropriate slotting, so I think having both would make sense there. Any other questions on this particular policy? Okay. Well, any questions on J F A B F, Students In Foster Care? Ms. Mackey.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Dr. Franklin and the folks who are supportive whenever these policies come forward. It's a lot of wordsmithing. It's a lot of attention to detail, and we appreciate not just these policies, but the work that goes into that. I know that you all have to proofread and edit, and I just appreciate your professionalism and the way that you communicate with us, and we just, we appreciate the attention and the effort that goes into this. I know it's not easy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate our virtual red ink pens on the board here who keep a close eye on grammatical errors. Let's move on to item twelve-point-two. Well, thank you, Dr. Franklin. Twelve-point-two, the first reading of the general fund budget for 2018-19 school year. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. To present the first reading of the general fund budget, we have Shelley Allen.
Thank you.
I don't know why I drew a blank on the last name, Shelley. Please forgive me.
It's really okay. It's really okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we bring before you the proposed 2018-2019 budget for first reading. Unfortunately, Dr. Maly could not be with us this evening. He conveniently fell ill a few days prior to first reading. So that is probably the limit of the humor that I'll be able to bring. I know that Dr. Maly makes this very entertaining, but I promise to give you all the same facts that he would. He does send his regards and wishes for you all tonight. Okay, we'll begin by going over, let's get this going, the key budget assumptions that were used in building our budget for first reading. As we have in past years, we assumed growth of approximately three-hundred-and-fifty students into all of our calculations. Senate budget includes a sixty-dollar increase to the base student cost, bringing the base student cost to two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. One of the issues, and we will see these numbers shortly, that has impacted the amount of revenue that we are generating in the Education Finance Act category, is the newly-defined poverty index. I'm sure most of you have heard about this, and it's been going on for several years now. This year, when the Senate approved to increase the base student cost by sixty dollars, they also had us go to the new poverty index. That poverty index changed basically because the definition of USDA, that USDA had for National School Lunch Program, free and reduced category, with community eligibility, it changed the nature of those classifications. So the State Department can no longer use those free and reduced populations to determine who the pupils in poverty are. So they had to come up with other methods. This new method is different for every district, and some may have benefited from that change and some did not. Well, we were one of those folks that did not benefit from that change in the calculation. So we are really losing about a million, a little over a million dollars related just to that change in poverty index and the way it's calculated. And we'll see those numbers in just a few minutes, but it did cut into our increase in EFA funding. We did get an increase in EFA, just not as much as we would have normally. Also assumes the state teacher salary increase with a step and a proposed one percent increase to the teacher salary schedule. Assumes three-hundred-thousand-dollar value of a mill, which has been provided us by the county. Assumes a seven-point-four percent increase to the employer cost of health insurance, which in perspective last year, the increase was a three-point-three percent increase. And it also assumes a one-point-one-five increase to the employer portion of state retirement. As you recall, last year, it was a little over two percent. Basically, the difference in a nutshell of the revenue that would be generated with a zero-mill increase or a cap increase, our cap is at ten-point-four mills. As you know, that's based on the growth and population percentages provided to us by the state. Our total was a three-point-two-four percent increase, which came out to be ten-point-four mills. That generates an additional three-million-one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. Just for reference, the net effect of a ten-point-four-mill increase, again, on owner-occupied property, we're all aware, that increase would result in zero impact for those tax bills. But for, for example, a twenty-thousand-dollar vehicle or any other non-owner-occupied property, it would equate to about a one-dollar-and-four-cent increase in tax per month. Then for a hundred-thousand dollars, it'd be five dollars and twenty cents per month. So that just gives you some perspective of what that would represent. Okay, overview of the revenues. As we stated earlier, the local property tax line item includes an increase of ten-point-four mills and also has some increase related to the assessed value and the value of a mill going up to three-hundred-thousand dollars. Property tax relief increased by nine-hundred-and-seven-thousand, and as you'll see on the EFA line item, we have an increase of a little over one-point-eight million. Back to the conversation earlier about the change in the poverty index, the perspective to compare that to is last year, we had a seventy-five-dollar increase in the base student cost, where we have a sixty-dollar increase this year, and we received four-point-eight million dollars, where this year, we're only receiving one-point-eight. So typically, we're bringing in anywhere from four to five million dollars in that line item, and this year, we're only getting about two million. So that definitely impacts how much revenue we're going to have as we continue looking through this budget. And then several other categories just highlight the state increase, bringing us to a total revenue increase with a increase of ten-point-four mills to ten-million-seven-hundred-thousands, a little over that, seven-hundred-thousand dollars. Any questions about the revenue part of it?
Ms. Mackey.
Just a point of clarification, just a question so that people understand what the poverty index means. What that means is there may be families whose situations have not changed and were still considerate impoverished, so to speak, but because the federal classification guidelines has changed, those families are no longer classified as meeting the poverty index, but their financial situation hasn't changed.
That's correct. Really, there's been no change at all. It's the definition of what the state considers poverty, and it's actually a state change that had to come about to adapt to what had changed on the National School Lunch Program.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear. Thank you so much.
But thank you for clarifying. That's a great point.
Ms. Allen, on the, if you would, when you showed the slide on this revenue regarding zero impact on homeownership, which we all know as Act 388, just for the benefit of our participants here, if you're wondering why that there is a zero amount increase due to a tax increase, is because the operating fund, the school operating fund, is not included on home occupied or homeowner's tax bill. You do see an item there for bonds, for the debt millage, but not for the operating fund. So what we're talking about tonight, what's being presented before us is a budget for our operating fund. So whatever the millage may be, or whatever we end up ultimately approving for someone's personal residence, there is zero impact on that. So that's why there is a zero there. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the EFA, it was sixty dollars with the poverty index changing, what would you say that that net rolls out to as a base student cost from around fifteen dollars, something like that?
Probably.
Okay.
I'd say fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty. So even though it's showing it's a sixty-dollar proposed increase, the net result ultimately would be about fifteen dollars base student cost per student.
Basically.
Which, you know, when we talk about that EFA money, the base student cost, where is the today, 2018's proposed base student cost compared to ten years ago? Approximately?
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask something like that. It is actually just caught back up with where we were. I believe if we go to two-four-three-five, for perspective back in 2008, 2009, it was at, well, let me, let's go back one more year, 2007, 2008, it was at two-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars.
Twenty-four-seventy-six. And where is the proposal today? Should it be passed?
Twenty-four-eighty-five.
So I put that in perspective that there is a, there is a legislation in which this base student cost should be funded each and every year by the General Assembly. It has, if it were kept, if they had kept up with per-law, what would be the base student cost today?
It is very close. I don't have the exact amount. Last year, I think it was twenty-nine-eighty-four, so it's very close to three thousand.
So had that been done as per their own, and the General Assembly's own legislation, it would be close to three thousand dollars.
That is correct.
So five hundred dollars per student short, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then finally, the other question on revenue is, is that I see here the percent change would equal about three-point-nine-one. I always like looking at history on that. Typically, our compounded annual growth rate has been hovering around five percent, correct?
Actually, I have that on the next page. I put it on the expenditure page, but you're correct, it's somewhere around four-point-eight-five, somewhere hovering around that. And so we are definitely below what we would normally be proposing. And so we are definitely below what we would normally be proposing.
Yeah, and some of those, if I may again, is that in past years, even when we have come in at evaluating the budget, not even seeking the max millage, we've still come in approximately around five percent on a compounded growth rate of our budget to keep up with inflation and the growth of our district. This year, from what I see there, three point nine one, even at a max millage, we would be at three point, we would be well under the five percent even with a maximum request. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no idea why that's doing that. That helps me with clarification, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Shad.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
You may need help, I don't know, but you probably have all these numbers in your head. How many students did we have in two thousand seven, two thousand eight?
In two thousand seven, two thousand eight, students, I know weighted pupils, which is a little different, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Definitely wasn't twenty-eight thousand, right?
I don't know that it was yet, twenty-eight.
Two, oh-seven, oh-eight.
I could tell you the weighted pupils when we add the weighting.
Well, I'm using the word.
Yeah.
Right, so to further the points that Chairman Plank has made, we have grown a lot. The law says what the law says, however, we have not received the funds from the state under the mandates that they placed on themselves.
That is correct.
We are operating with more students, but not receiving the money that we were told we were going to get. That's my statement. You don't disagree with that, right?
No, I do not.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, if we were fully funded, in this estimation, we estimate we would have an additional sixteen point six million dollars in revenue if it were fully funded, the base student cost.
And in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three students, according to our state report card.
So five thousand more students in the ten-year period, and we expect three hundred and fifty more to come next year with this budget. I mean, and our budget is based on the revenues we're expecting to come from the state.
That is correct.
Okay. Kind of puts a pin in doing more with less.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shad. Yeah, and to tag a bit, I know we're jumping on this, but I think it's important for the public to understand, and I appreciate so many being here tonight, because these are some of the topics that we talk about that are just so critical. There was the non-owner-occupied, so rental dwellings, but primarily businesses, where if you ask, well, where are you getting the funding then to run your, run the district, the two hundred seventy-eight, two hundred eighty million dollars? That is, from a property tax standpoint, that is coming from the business development, of which I am one, of which I own, and which I see, that property tax bill. And so we run, this puts pressure, of course, on our business community in a sense, because we're trying to grow business, be pro-business, because that's what helps provide for the funding for our district. And then yet, we continue to put pressure on the business, which then the business has to decide, do I move into that district because of the tax burden? And it's a cycle. And we have people here tonight who represent a group, who feel very passionately about a particular area, of which we share, very passionately. And as we go further in this and look expenditures, it's, I just want to make sure the public understands, gosh, the pressures that we're faced with, with mandates that come from our state, and so many various things that we want to do to improve education, discipline to academics and curriculum, and the list goes on and on. So I just, we're probably dissecting this a bit deep, and at the same time, I think it's critically important that people understand. And I'll tell you, education finance is, it's a whole nother ballgame, but we appreciate you, Shelley, for doing this. I'll allow you to continue with expenditures if there's no other questions.
No, I'm just thrilled that the board understands it. Well, enough to explain it to the general public. That's great. Kudos to you guys. Okay, now we'll move on to the part that probably made Harry very ill. When we sit down, truly, Harry is ill, please, no, I'm joking, but when we sit down and we start piecing together with the revenue that we'll generate, even with that cap mill increase, there's just not a whole lot that we can do. This is basically the breakdown and showing the three point nine percent, but I want to move on and actually talk more about what makes up the increases that are on the total two point seven million. As I stated earlier, there was a, there's a projected seven point four percent increase to the health insurance line item, again, compared to last year, a three point three. So that is twice, basically, what we had last year. So that's a significant increase, about one point three million. Retirement increase, we know there'll be a one percent increase. Typically, they also increase about point one five or such for one of the other insurance pieces related to that. So we're estimating a little over two million. And then we get, so keep in mind, those first two lines are state mandates. There is no discretionary, we, there is, we want to opt out of that. They're done deal. It has to happen. The certified salary schedule increase, and also the certified salary schedule one percent increase, so those, the third and fourth line items up there relate to state-mandated teacher salary schedule increases. So this year, they not only will be given their step for their year of experience, but also the salary schedule is increased by one percent, as well as a few of the first cells in the salary schedule, they have increased those. Many districts may not be impacted by that, but they did raise those as well. So that gets us through those first four line items, and all of those are state-mandated, no option there. And we're already at, what, seven, a little over seven million dollars. So then we get into your certified, I mean, I'm sorry, your classified salary steps for all other employees that are not teachers and in that certified category. And typically, we have proposed a comparable increase for them as the teacher salary schedule. So for example, in last year, there was no increase to the teacher salary schedule. They received their step, and that was it. The schedule did not change. Same thing for the rest of our classified employees last year. So basically proposing that, we follow suit this year with all other employees. Next, typically, utilities increase. Everybody knows that's a very common thing that we have on here. Operating contract increases, we've had increases, I think, eighty-four percent, eighty-six percent increase in sewer costs is what was stated at some point, and several contracts that we annually have increased for CPI. SRO contract increase, basically, we're paying forty-five to ninety per SRO to maintain the twenty-three that we have. That is a slight increase over last year. And then several of the other items are very common standards that we have, national boards commitments, where we'll continue to pay for any new national boards, certified teachers, and then we have six teachers for growth. I would note that that is not the full amount we would probably normally be adding. We would probably add more like seventeen. But we are trying to use the FTS that we have and spread them accordingly to minimize the impact on pupil-teacher ratio and do that with six. So that could be very challenging, but that is our goal this year. We want to continue with the new reading curriculum, open court, which we started last year. We also had a little bit of cost savings from some reorganization with one position. We have the case benchmark exams based on South Carolina College and Career Ready. And then we also have a reassignment of some of our part-time, I think it's evening, weekend, I'm sorry, part-time weekend, second and third shift security officers. Will's come up with a plan and his team to shift some of those schedules around so that we can have more coverage in our schools that do not have SROs at a very minimal cost. So we are working to try and do that, to have a presence in all of our schools. And then also the reauthorization of the IB schools. So at this point, unfortunately, that is about the extent of what we've been able to pull together for next year, based on our current revenue. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Allen? Ms. Maggie.
Question, and you may not be able to answer this, and if not, we can probably, I can probably dig around to find out. With regard to utilities, one of the things that the legislature is tossing around and debated ad nauseam last week was a rate decrease for consumers. Does that apply to us as well, or is that just residential's? And I don't know offhand, maybe it's something that we can research, but I'm wondering if that would impact us, if indeed there is a unilateral.
If indeed there is a unilateral rate decrease?
It is. We attended the SCANA and SCG Large Customer Group meeting last Wednesday, talked about the, those decreases. It will affect us. It'll have, it's still up in the air with the Dominion deal as well. If the Dominion deal goes through, we're entitled to a one-time two point five million dollar rebate to our utility bills, including the rate increase. So that is not reflected, because we just don't really know what's going to happen with that, but we are entitled, we are a large customer that pays very big bills to the power. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Maggie. This is Dr. Elkins Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Maggie.
My question is, have, do we have a surplus in the amount that you presented to us for national board certified teachers who may transfer into the district?
I'm sorry, repeat that one?
National board certified teachers who may transfer into the district, do we have a cushion placed in this amount anticipating transfers into the district who are national board certified?
I would say that typically, you're going to lose some and you're going to gain some. So there could be years where we're a little over, a little under, depending on what that is. But in the end, it should pretty much wash out. There may be some years that we're over or under in that particular line item, but usually the salaries as a whole is what we'll look at. Does that help?
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I wanted to bring up the SRO contract for a second since that's on there, especially in light of school safety being a hot, hot issue from Valentine's Day and onward, has become increasingly a hot issue. Right now, you can see right here on the screen that our SRO contracts, roughly one point one million dollars. And if we, if I understand correctly, in order to onboard an SRO, because of the equipment, vehicle, and the first onboarding, it comes to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Hundred and twenty-three, six oh seven.
Hundred and twenty-three, six oh seven, to be exact. And based on the amount we would need to have an SRO in every school, which has been a request from the community, there have been conversations about that, I just want, to put that in perspective, that's approximately two million dollars to add that. And I bring that up simply because what you see, two million dollars, what it can do in a budget season like this, which if I'm sitting in your seat right now, I say, okay, well, this is great, we're talking about budget, we've got revenue, and we've got some expenditures there, but what are we doing about our current budget? What does that look like? What are we doing as it relates to looking at items and things that, do we need to strategically abandon some things that aren't working or doing this? No one likes to talk about budget cuts. If you would just speak to that for a second, because I know, being on the board for the last four years, that is something that I know several of us have brought up each and every budget season.
Well, I'll be glad to touch on that.
And philosophy is fine. I'm not looking for specific numbers.
Well, I can give you specific numbers. In going through and looking back to two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, and adding up all the either strategic abandements or where we've cut things, made budget reductions, so we've increased the budget, but we've also done some things to decrease it, there's over fifteen million dollars in items over that period of time that we have cut. And I'll give you some examples. We have reduced some of the discretionary allocations in years past. We have consolidated programs. We have closed some programs, the cap program, and pulled those in. We have, we closed Anna Boyd and merged that program with another program. So those are just some minor examples, but if you add up all of those things over the past, back to two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, it's about fifteen million dollars. So we have made changes, and we have consolidated programs and done away with programs based on evaluations of those. Another example, I will tell you, needs have changed, and I can speak to my department. In lieu of coming to ask for two or three new positions, which we truly need, we have reorganized the department and tried to build in new efficiencies. So those things don't show up on here as negatives and then positives back, but we have tried to realign our resources, and that's done kind of at the department level and/or, you know, at the discretion of Dr. Davis and leadership. But those things happen on an annual basis. They may not be captured in these numbers, but they are ongoing. Does that help?
It does. Thank you so much, and I know, we appreciate Dr. Davis's leadership and being a good steward of those, of looking at those programs, making those tough decisions. Any other questions, Mr. Shad?
Mr. Chair, very quickly, one thing I don't want to leave undone is, as we do every year, we seek out the requests from our instructional leaders with regard to what they need on the ground. We encourage them to continue to do so. I do know that they all, we make it abundantly clear, that everything on their list cannot be taken care of because of the budget constraints, but I don't want them to, I don't want them to leave with the understanding that they're not being heard, that their requests are not respected. It's just a matter of what we can handle, and I hate to even use the word priority, but the budget, in a sense, requires it, and we just hope that they all continue to do what they can for our twenty-eight thousand students, and that the community recognizes the tough choices that we have to make with this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shad. Any other questions on expenditures? If I, to his point, to Mr. Shad's point, it looks like that came to about nineteen million dollars, the requests.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, and we've, it ends up having to, through the constraints of what we have to ten, so.
That's correct.
Well, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Allen? Thank you for standing in Harry's stead. We appreciate that and did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to item thirteen point one, which is agenda items for May eighth, two thousand eighteen. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, the May eighteenth, twenty eighteen future agenda items, you will find student expulsions and appeals, student readmission requests, adult aid requests, re-requests, special recognitions. Our student focus will be Pontiac Elementary School. We'll have our legislative update. We'll be asking for approval of policy revisions, IHBA, as well as JFABF. We'll also introduce a policy revision to, to policy GCC slash GDC, employee personal leaves and absences. We'll have a budget update, we'll have an update on trauma-informed schools and students. We'll have an update from the, for the Fort Jackson Education Partnership, as well as an update on accountability model.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are there any other items for future agendas? All right, hearing them, we'll move now, we have our fourteen point one, our second public participation. We were able to move through everyone who'd signed up earlier. If there's anyone else who would like to address the board, please do so now. And if you would state your name and address, thank you.
Milton Parker, one oh three Ashton Hill Drive. I am a former teacher and administrator out of New Jersey. I have mentored in about five or six of the schools in this district. I am from Moore Justice. And being a retired educator, I was kind of taken back last night when no one from Richland Two showed up for the meeting. As Mr. Plank said, finance is a big ball of wax. It's a difficult position to be in to, you know, understand all the things that go before you. Well, parents have the same concern. We have, I'm a grandfather, and I know that education is not like it was even when I was in the school district in New Jersey. But I don't know. in New Jersey. But, I don't know if you thought about the message you sent, not only to your staff, but even to the students. If they know that you don't show up for a meeting concerning discipline, which is a big priority in this, not only in this district, but throughout the country. If you read the Education Department's Civil Rights Data Collection for 2015, I think it's 2015 and 16, there's some interesting information in there about discipline. And with Devoce in charge of the Education Department, things are going to change. Things are not going to get better necessarily for your district unless you take the lead. So, I'm asking that you think seriously about what message you sent by not sending even a representative to state whether you wanted to be a part, you didn't want to be a part, but you have to take a stand. This is very, very important because we are losing too many students who get disenfranchised with education. They're teachers. They act out, and the next thing you know, we see them on TV. So, I'm asking, and I pray that you will take this seriously and discuss about the discipline problems in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Appreciate that. Any other individuals who'd like to address the board? Mr. Agostini, I see, the groom of Ms. Lindsay Agostini. If you'd state your name and your hat dress, please. Thank you.
Jim Agostini. I live at 120 Cooper's Nursery Road in Elgin. That's our mailing address. Just to let everyone know, in full disclosure, my wife is on the board. I want to first say, I applaud you as a board. I've witnessed all of you run as candidates. I know where your hearts are. I know that you are very involved in the community. And sometimes that's not well said, and that needs to be mentioned tonight. Your selfless service and your commitment far exceed, and looking at that budget, and someone who's in the finance business, I understand these priorities. And someone that's looking at the safety of our children in the schools and what happened on Valentine's Day, we have all priorities. It's not mutually exclusive, but we all have to be able to communicate in a way that we can collaborate and achieve the goals necessary for this district and this community. And I would like everyone here to understand that everyone's trying to reach that higher ground. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Appreciate that. Any other individuals who'd like to address the board? Please do so now. Okay. Thank you so much for your participation. We'll now move on to item 15.1, which is Board Superintendent Comments. I will start with my right and move our way. Did I do that last time? I'll start with, I can never remember which way to start, but go ahead, Ms. Agostini. I'll have you follow your groom.
Well, and I don't need to introduce him since he just introduced himself. Thank you for coming. Last night, in fact, I did attend the first portion of the Moore Justice meeting. I was there for half of it. Over the past month, I've been to two meetings, one on March 26th with our superintendent and five of my fellow board members. And last week, I did go to a format meeting as well with the executive director of Moore Justice and also several leadership people. Last week when I was there, the premise of the meeting, or the purpose, was to inform me as to how the meeting would run. I was presented with the ask questions that have been previously presented tonight during our public session. When I told them that I am not able to act on my own, and we had said that at our March 26th meeting, we work together as a board. Not one person, not any individual up here can make a decision by ourselves to represent the board. So, I would have to say no to their ask because I'm not in a position to do that. I was assured I would be given the opportunity to address the crowd. Last night, when I went and they had the mental health portion, the rules of engagement had changed when they brought them up. Again, I was told that I would have my opportunity to talk. If you said no to the ask, you were given 30 seconds. It was repeated then that they would come back and try and negotiate with you. Again, I was not in a position to negotiate. At that point, and then they finally said they were going to keep you up there until you were able to commit to the ask. At that point, I did decide to get up and leave. However, I did have a speech or just some thoughts that I wanted to share that I am going to take the opportunity to share tonight, as I'd taken several opportunities to listen to Moore Justice's concerns. I wish they would have afforded me the same opportunity last night. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I am Lindsay Agostini, and I've been a member of the Richland School District Two Board of Trustees since November 2016, just a little over a year and a half ago. What an incredible gathering, especially one initiated by multiple faiths looking and sharing common goals within our community. My motivation in joining you all tonight is to listen and hear your concerns and ideas. I am able to commit to doing that. In a letter from your leadership, signed by Reverend Carrie Grady and Rabbi Jonathan Case, I was directed to answer the two following questions with a clear commitment. Please note, while I'm here to listen, my comments and my thoughts are my opinions, and I are not to be considered representative of the board. While I'm receptive to further research and information on both ideas, I cannot affirm my commitment to either. Please let me share why. Question one was regarding the discipline scorecard. To me, this sounds like no small project, not a one-day, one-hour meeting project. I think the time commitment needed to get this done properly in 45 days is overly ambitious. For personal reasons and because of previous community service commitments, based on your timeline, I cannot commit to this. Secondly, I'm not clear on how a report card will actually reduce disciplinary issues. With that said, I'm not discouraging you all from developing something like this. According to Richland Two Board Policy, BG, proposals regarding policies may originate with a member of the board, the superintendent, a staff member, parent legal guardian, student consultant, civic group, advisory committee, or any resident of the district. Question two, currently, some of our schools use certain components of PBIS. Many of our schools have adopted character-building programs suited best for their school. With regard to hiring a PBIS coach, that is not a decision I can make alone. In August of 2014, Richland Two established a discipline task force and developed a discipline matrix. Additionally, a behavior intervention specialist was hired. In 2015, 2016, Richland Two piloted the BEST program, BEST Education Supports and Training. While not an expert in either area, BEST and PBIS, the programs seem to have many similarities. With budget constraints, would we be duplicating resources? With budget bring brought up, it is budget season, as you've all just heard. As we prepare for our first reading tomorrow night, our preliminary budget has been set for the year. It is my understanding from a workshop last week, any increase in funds we receive this year will be just enough to cover increases in our current cost. For example, step, teacher step increases, increases in employee healthcare costs and pensions, to name a few. Let me share with you ideas, though, on how to make PBIS happen. Talk to your school principal. If you have a Richland Two student, reach out to your school principal and let him know it's a priority in your school. Share your concerns with your school's parent advisory representative. Sit on your school's Student Improvement Council. In the past month, we've had two open public budget meeting hearings to listen to ideas. No one attended either. Participate in one of Richland Two's community conversations. Finally, school board elections are in the fall. Encourage someone from your group to run. I've met with Moore Justice twice within the last month. When we met, I was told the question asked was, what keeps you up at night? My answer is, parents not being parents. If we're going to reduce school disciplinary issues, I think we need to look inside our own homes. Can we look at ourselves and ask, when was the last time we inspected our child's bookbag, looked under their bed, in their closet, or opened a drawer in their room? Looked in their car? Paid attention to the video games they're playing, the TV shows they're watching, or the music they're listening to? Are you friends with them on social media? When is the last time you've taken their cellphone and looked at their text messages? I do believe if we did this, as, I do believe if we did this more as parents and encouraged others in our churches, neighborhoods, and civic organizations to do this, our students' behavior in school would improve. Again, I appreciate the invitation to come and hear your concerns. You've given me much to think about and consider. I would like to close with a quote from our former First Lady, Barbara Bush. You must read to your children, and you must hug your children, and you must love your children. Your success as a family, our success as a society, depends not on what happens in the White House, but what happens inside your house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Mr. Shad?
Thank you. We are public servants who felt the need to make an impact on the students in Richland District Two. We come from different walks of life, have different perspectives. We disagree, and then we also agree. But first in mind is always having students first. It has been said that our absence from the Nehemiah Assembly was telling. What I'm curious about and what I've heard is that it was not told to the Assembly that our board was present for a meeting with leadership from the Moore Justice folks in March. I attended that meeting. There were also individual meetings with some board members prior to the Assembly. You may not always see us go to the National School Board Association, which we just came back from in San Antonio. You may not see that I attended at least two classes, one regarding boys of color, one regarding girls of color, and how to address from a discipline standpoint, so that I can bring it back to my colleagues and we can discuss this. You are not present for our retreat meetings when we talk about it. You were not present when we created a discipline committee to show that we are concerned and are responsive to it. Perhaps with the information that we were provided in the meeting in March, the data was based on 2013, not what has happened since then, not the discipline task force that was created in conjunction with, and we don't call them stakeholders, these are our partners, with parents, with district employees, where Discipline Matrix was created, where that has been given out to our instructional leaders, and there have been results. The numbers are showing that the discipline referrals have been reduced, the suspensions have been reduced, the expulsions have been reduced. To keep children as much as we can in school to be educated, one of the toughest decisions that we make as a board is to decide whether to send a student out of our school district. And in part, what we have to do is balance that student's right to be educated in our school, perhaps for something that they did wrong, with the rest of the classroom. Those students also have a right to be educated. We have put a premium on safety for our students. We have put a premium with regard to student behavior. I did not see the Moore Justice representatives, at least they didn't identify themselves at these community conversations that Dr. Grant has had for the last couple of years. There's one coming up soon. I think we had to reschedule it in May. Our superintendent will be there. So, I just want to make sure that the record is corrected, that just because we did not attend that meeting does not mean that we are not responsive to our students. Just because we're not there does not mean that we do not care. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Shad. Dr. Caution Parker?
I agree with both of my colleagues and everything they've stated. Thirty-four years in this district, I've worked, starting as a classroom teacher, all the way up to deputy superintendent for 16 years. I was worked very closely with discipline in terms of being the deputy superintendent. It just concerns me, just like we have a group here concerned about the discipline and putting students out of school, we also have a group of parents feeling we don't do enough. They are sick and tired of the classrooms being disrupted, and their children can't learn. So, we have to address that as well. When we expel a student from the district, from the school, there's so much that goes into that decision that you don't know. And we can't tell you because of the FERPA law. And that's something I, I hope you all look into, the FERPA law. There are certain things that we simply cannot share as a district and as leaders in this district. But, I'm very offended and feel very insulted by the comments that have been made this evening about me not going to this meeting, and I'm speaking for myself, that I did not go to this meeting, therefore I don't care. Now, this is, I say 34 years in the district. I retired, this is my fourth year on the board. Thirty-eight years in Richland School District Two. My children came through School District Two. I pay taxes in School District Two. So, I am just as concerned and involved as everybody else. But to sit there and say that we don't care because we don't come to a meeting is absolutely ridiculous. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
To all the presenters earlier today receiving certificates, congratulations to you. And I'm an educator of 29 years. I love what I do. I'm a teacher, former principal, and I'm a trainer with restorative practices, where I go out and I train teachers and administrators how to restore relationships. And I want to leave you with this quote. Give a man a fish, he'll eat for a day. Teach him how to fish, he'll eat for a lifetime. As an educator, I follow rules and procedures. And our board policy says, we don't respond to comments made, so I'm not going to respond. However, I have an open-door policy. You all know I'm very vocal. I have an open-door policy. If you want to talk to me, contact me. 803-200-2121. Put in Students First, 2012@gmail.com. I'm going to follow policy and procedures. Thank you for coming. Look forward to seeing you at more boards, school board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Ms. Mackey?
First and foremost, for the people who are here, as I always say, who have to be here, thank you. Bless you for your time. For those who choose to be here, I appreciate it. I don't want to let it be unsaid that the Bush family is mourning their matriarch and former First Lady of our country, and I extend my condolences to those folks. And to that end, we have lives that we have lost in District Two. There have been students who've died since the beginning of this school year, since, I can only speak for the four years that I've been on the board. There are students who've died. There are parents who've had their lives lost. There have been spouses. But, you know, to lose a child is the most heart-wrenching, I know, of all loss. So, I want to just take a minute to, even with the recent reports, recent reports that we've gotten with regard to yet another student life lost, I just want to send my condolences to those parents, and my heart goes out to those parents, and just keep our community embraced in prayer through the good, the bad, or the differences. And I want to just iterate that we meet publicly twice a month. But outside of school board meetings, we visit schools, we read, we engage with staff, educators and students. We review and set policy. We attend continuing education conferences and workshops to ensure that we are knowledgeable on state and nationwide policies and practices, and that we encourage the same in our district. We promote diversity and inclusion. And outside of those commitments to the district, we take the time to hear concerns and accolades, as Dr. Elkins Johnson said, by phone calls, by emails, and we are responsive to the same, and have met with a lot of people in the room tonight. And we encourage people to continue to reach out to us. We tackle a great deal of weighty issues at our school board meetings, but I'm always thankful for the public participation portion of our board meetings because we have an opportunity to hear from a public perspective what we've oftentimes heard beforehand or responded to, either in email, phone, or meetings. And for your time here tonight, everyone who's here, the parents who come to support their children during student focuses, and spouse, and family members who come to support their family members when there are awards given, we appreciate your all being here. So, in short, I thank you all, parents, students, and community members who take time out of our schedule, their schedules to come and participate in our meetings, and I would love to see and encourage more of the same. And I echo Dr. Elkins Johnson's sentiments as well, that we're always available by phone call and by email. And I think most of us are responsive, all of us are responsive to the same. But thank you for coming and taking time out of your evening to be here. We appreciate hearing from you, and we welcome more of the same. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Davis? Dr. Davis.
Actions speak volumes. Since the start of the school year, I've had an opportunity to visit every school in this district. Some I've visited twice and probably will continue the road, will finish the rotation of visiting at least every school twice in this district. There are 41 school sites. I visit four to five classrooms per visit, interact with hundreds of students, thousands of students throughout the course of the year. Nothing makes me feel better than walking into a classroom and students know who I am. And if you've had the pleasure of walking with me, I believe that my students, or our students in this district, know exactly who I am, and they know that I care. I return student emails when they email me directly. I set aside time when my students ask, "Can I interview you for a project that I'm doing?" "Yes, you can." "Can you come to my office?" "Dr. Davis, can I shadow you?" "Yes, you can. You and your brother can shadow me." And we walk around schools together. "Dr. Davis, can you come to our school and read to our students?" "I will come to your school and read to your students." "Can you just stop by my classroom and speak to my young boys and talk about your path, your challenges?" "Yes, I can." So I agree that actions speak louder than words. If you want to see the actions that I've take, or if I need to prove that, and I'm taking this a little personal because this is my profession, this is my calling, this is my passion, and I'm very passionate about the education of the students in this school district. If you want to, follow me on Twitter. See the number of classes I visit every day, how I make time to visit with my students and meet with teachers and parents. I'm always readily accessible to anyone. And I understand that we may not always agree on everything, but that's okay. I've said that from the very beginning of the school year. We won't always agree on everything, but we can agree to try to work together. Since February 2018, representatives, including the Richland Two Board of Trustees members and myself, have met with members of the Moore Justice multiple times. In these meetings, we've learned about their interest in education initiatives related to discipline, and we provided them with information on the district's work in rethinking school discipline. We shared that Richland School District Two continues to be on the right path and ahead of the curve when it comes to rethinking discipline in our schools. The Richland Two Discipline Task Force, which was formed in 2014, brought together community partners to rethink student discipline within a year. Within a year, the task force drafted a comprehensive set of recommendations for developing a discipline matrix and tiered discipline model, which was implemented district-wide this year. We participated in the White House convening to rethink school dis, by invitation, in 2015, and the Rethink Discipline Region convening in 2016 and 2017. We showed up, and our actions spoke volumes. The work of the Community Task Force also led to the development of the Richland Two Behavior Education Supports and Training Program, also known as BEST, a multi-tiered behavior support system that provides behavior education support and training to students, teachers, and parents. Since pioneering the program in 2015-16, at four schools, additionally, Richland School District Two continues to implement the program, six in 2016 and 2017, five in 2017 and 2018. And through the, and through BEST, students are encouraged, among other things, to set goals for themselves, reflect on their performance, and practice mindfulness. Faculty and staff receive training on de-escalation, restorative practices, cultural-relevant pedagogy, and positive classroom management. Educators report improvements in academic performance, decreases in negative behaviors, and increase in a sense of community within the classrooms implementing the BEST model. The BEST program is just one way that our district strives to help our students take ownership of their behavior and grow. We know that if our students are not in school, we cannot prepare them for success through challenging and engaging learning experiences. We have and continue to seek out voices and ideas from the community as we support our students in finding their pathways to purpose. And just to give a clarification of just some information that was shared about one of our BEST schools and one of our BEST models, it was shared earlier that Conder Elementary had a total of 116 out-of-school suspensions compared to some other schools that had less than one. What was not shared was that Conder wasn't a BEST school until this year. It was a result of Conder having 116 suspensions is why now, this year, they are a BEST school. So it shows our commitment to analyzing the data and making informed decisions based on what the data has shared. If you look at all of the BEST model, and this was the information that was shared with the organization, so the same data that was read was in absence of all the data that is here regarding the suspensions in the schools, and if you look at the BEST models and the schools since BEST has been implemented, for example, Rice Creek Elementary, 2014-2015, they had 67 out-of-school suspensions. They implemented BEST. The following year, those suspensions dropped to 18 suspensions. The third year of implementing BEST, those suspensions dropped to seven out-of-school suspensions by implementing the BEST model. It takes a systemic approach to improvement. Nothing happens in a vacuum. It takes commitment to it. And when you look at the data, you see those schools that have implemented the model with fidelity, whether it's PBIS, BEST, or restorative practice, it takes fidelity and commitment. You will see that there is a significant decrease in the number of suspensions. And so just take an opportunity to ask for the complete data. Ask for all the data for yourself to review and come to a conclusion as an individual. Throughout the course of the school year, we seek feedback and input from the superintendent's faculty advisory council, which is held once a month, the parent advisory council, which is also held once a month, as well as our district faith-based organization, which we, is called NORMA, and our Business Education Alliance. Additionally, we have these meetings once a month and ask for input and concerns from our partners about what's going on in the community. Our Office of Diversity and Multicultural Inclusion holds a series of community conversations each spring that allows members of our community to come in and speak about strength and other opportunities for improvement in areas of diversity, multicultural inclusion. I am proud to report that all of these efforts are moving us in the right directions. Our suspensions and expulsion numbers are trending downward, while our on-time graduation rates continue to climb up. From the 2013 to 2014 school year to 2016-2017 school years, suspensions have fallen nearly 2,000 suspensions, from 9,000 to 7,000, and expulsions have decreased from 110 expulsion to last year, 52 expulsions of 28,000 students. There were 52 expulsions in the school district. Over the same four years, our graduation rate has climbed from 81.1% to 89.6%, almost 90%. That's representation of nine out of every 10 students in Richland School District Two graduates within four years. And our student population has grown, over 900 students. Our commitment is real, our resolution is strong, and we are content on striving to be the premier school district, period.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Obviously, this is somewhat emotional topic tonight. We appreciate you being here, those of you who have come representing this particular organization. That's part of the process. And at the same time, I serve alongside six other board members, a superintendent, an amazing cabinet, wonderful family of Richland Two, who works very hard for what we do day in and day out in this Richland Two family. I think what, in this particular case, what I struggle with, knowing where my heart and my character is in this district, is the approach of which this has been handled. I too have been at two of the meetings and have heard the Moore Justice, the theme behind what is so critical and so important. I applaud you for continuing to fight the fight that you have. The challenge is how it is handled. I was very clear, very clear, in my second meeting with Moore Justice about a prior commitment, of which I wanted to honor, of which I have a character element, of which I'm going to honor certain things that I do day in and day out, the amount of time and effort that goes into this. I joke and say it's, my real job's a part-time job now. Yet, I can't help but be saddened by the pathway chosen to where specifically in the second meeting, when I advised that I cannot make this meeting because of a prior commitment I had to commit, that's specifically from a pastor in our community saying, "Well, your actions speak louder than words." That if I don't show up to one meeting, that that defines Craig Plank, defines Richland Two, defines our fine superintendent, defines the family. That is frustrating, and it saddens me because there are, we, we're talking about our faith community, of which I am tremendously, I tremendously respect. I see many and have spoken to many. At times, I think that we are so accessible, it's to our detriment, can slow things down a bit, but we take pride in that. I will take calls and return phone calls day in and day out. I have spoken to several of this, of your group today. The actions have already been spoken. You know, it's, it's, when that kind of pathway is chosen, it becomes very challenging to want to get past the emotion and really talk about the issue, which is a huge issue. It's a real issue. And I've been debating whether I say this. You know, I actually got a phone call today from someone representing the group, who left a voicemail and didn't hang up after they had finished their voicemail. And continued to mock and talk, and I could play it, but, you know, for the condescending nature and the sarcasm, that is not the way that you handle the governance process. You know, so I have, I have struggled today with how to handle this emotionally because it means so much to me, all the things that Dr. Davis and my fellow board members have talked about, and want to focus on content, because we're on the same page as it comes to the theme of discipline and choosing to improve our schools. I think it's time to rethink how, how the message has come. It's created a bit of a rub, and I hopefully we can restore that, that as we move forward. I really do. And I just ask that you consider that as you continue in your work to take care of the kids in Richland Two and throughout our state and in our country. So I appreciate everybody. I appreciate all those, the celebrations we had earlier. I appreciate the hard work that each and every one of us do. I appreciate you as a community, and I hope that our actions do speak louder than our words. With that, we'll move on to our item number 16.1, which is our executive session, session number two. We were, we were able to get through our executive session work in the first session. So now we'll move on to item 17, which is adjourning. And without objection, I will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.